Good evening and welcome to the Joint Independence Monmouth City Council Meeting. Glad to have everybody here. Welcome.
Yes, thank you.
I thought that instead of having a roll call type thing, let's just go around the room and start at one side and just go around and introduce yourself and that way we also know who's here and who's not here. And so Mayor, you want to?
Sure, I'm C. Scoons, Mayor.
I'm Scott Bookler, City Manager.
I'm Wallace Holman, I'm the City Recorder.
Byron Schinkel, City Councilor.
Garrett Silverdaniel, City Councilor.
Roxanne Belt, City Councilor.
Christopher Lopez, Monmouth City Councilor.
Good afternoon, I'm Laura Schammer and I represent the people of Monmouth City Council.
Kathy Martin-Wellis, Independent City Councilor.
I'm Michael Hicks, Independent City Councilor.
Shannon Kope, Independent City Councilor.
I'm Kayce, Independent City Councilor.
Marilyn Morton, Independent City Council President.
Erin Johnson, Independent City Recorder.
I'm Tom Pessmer, Independent City Manager.
And I'm John McCardle, the Mayor. And Councilor Ransom Smith is on her way. She's stuck on a bridge in Salem.
Oh.
A wonder what.
A two?
Yes. And so it's fun. It's great that everybody's able to come today. I really appreciate that. We're officially doing a work session between both councils, so there's not public input and everything like that. But we have a presentation on continuum of care dealing with homeless issues in the region. And we're really honored to have Janet Carlson, recently retired Marion County Commissioner, longtime person who's worked to make the community a better place. And she has a presentation. She came back, they moved to Idaho to be with family. And then she came back special to be here for this meeting tonight. So I really want to publicly thank her. Yay! And I really want to publicly thank you for doing that. And would you please step up to the table? And the meeting is yours and...
I'm just wondering, and I should have asked this before, is there anywhere this computer can go over there? Does it have to be up there? Has to be up there. Okay. So I'm going to be standing kind of behind you. So if you want to arrange yourselves.
Right. And I'm like, I personally am going to go out there so I can see. So if people need to move, please feel comfortable doing that so that you can look. So otherwise you'd have to look through me. You're okay.
Okay.
It just started.
Yeah. All right. So thank you very much for joining us to attend to this meeting. This is Jimmy Jones, Executive Director of the Loma Valley Community Action Agency. We're going to tag teams' presentation for you tonight. I was county commissioner for 16 years and was very interested in homelessness, as I think we all are. But Anna Peterson, who was the mayor of Salem, served with me on the Public Safety Coordinating Council. And she asked if we could put together a task force on homelessness. Kathy Clark from Kaiser got wind that we were going to do that, so she wanted to be part of it. And then Anna said, well, because Salem Bridge is Marion and Polk Counties' bridge, no pun intended, but we would definitely want to invite Polk County. So we ended up with four co-chairs, Jennifer Wheeler, Anna Peterson, myself, and Kathy Clark. And we had a task force and called ourselves the Midland Homeless Initiative. Came up with a strategic plan. It's about 26 odd pages full of, because homelessness has so many facets to it. It has a whole breadth of strategies in it. And then we didn't want this plan to sit on a shelf. And we promised everyone it would just be a year for the task force. And so we were done in a year. And so the jurisdictions, Marion County, City of Salem, City of Kaiser, wanted to have a staff person so that those strategies that didn't have a lead designated in the strategic plan could continue to roll forward. And then we talked about where we wanted to have that staff person. And council government seemed like a really ideal place because, as Kathy says, it's Switzerland. There's no political agenda. You know, we would, if you do something for Salem at Marion County, or you do something for Marion County and Polk County, I mean, you know how those things go, right? So we thought it would be best to have it at council governments. And then we invited other jurisdictions to participate in some presentations. And Monmouth and Independence did join and put some dollars in to provide that staff support. And we've done some really good work. A money map that shows where all the resources are that go into homelessness, a gaps analysis, resource map, 550 services in Marion and Polk County mapped and looking where the overlaps and the gaps are. And so then the other large piece of work that was on the work plan for this Midland Homeless Initiative was this issue of the continuum of care. So we had a staff person, Ally Trishel. She was with us for about eight months. She had a master's degree in public health. She lived up north, I think in Vancouver, and was commuting down. And she got a job in public health in Multnomah County. So you can't blame her for leaving us. We interviewed some folks and didn't exactly find the right person. It was Thanksgiving, and it was really hard finding candidates. And so I was retiring and I guess the committee, in my absence, decided that I might be a good person to come in and just on contract do some work on this one project on continuum of care. So we've done the analysis. I believe you have this paper that has an executive summary. It's kind of lengthy. Did that go out? Or didn't go out? Okay. So we can make sure that you get that paper if you'd like to see it, because most of what I'm going to talk about tonight is written up in the paper. And so that is the analysis that we've been doing this presentation. So what we'll be looking at tonight is whether or not Monmouth and Independence are interested in supporting the notion that Marion and Polk Counties and possibly Anne Hill County would together form our own continuum of care. So I'll start in and talk about what a continuum of care is, how we got from where we were to where we are, and then what the steps are to move us forward. So what is a continuum of care? HUD, the Housing and Urban Development Department of the Federal Government, has required these of communities since 1994. It comes through the McKinney-Vento Homeless Assistance Act. And the idea is that they wanted a single comprehensive application on homelessness through this act. But more than that, they really wanted communities to not just look at one single strand of money. Because if you look at this money map that I just talked about, we identified about $107 million in a year that's going into homelessness, combined Marion and Polk Counties. And of course, these are not dollars that are going just directly to homeless people, but they're mental health dollars. For example, for those dollars, you'd have more people who are homeless, substance abuse treatment dollars, domestic violence focus dollars for women who are fleeing or men who are fleeing domestic violence. So the idea is that you would take all of those dollars and look at them together and develop a long-term strategic plan and do this year-round community planning effort. And then submit your application for that smaller amount of dollars from McKinney-Vento. My source for the PowerPoint I put in the paper relies heavily on this battered paper called Continuum of Care 101 that HUD puts out. And so what they talk about there is that you see on the left column, these are the dollars that are continuum of care programs. The $107 million, just for comparison purposes, in our good year with continuum of care, we got about $1 million for Marion and Polk Counties. So it's not that the dollars are really large. It's what they allow us to do in terms of the coordination and leverage. And HUD says that you can take these dollars and then connect them with other programs. So runaway homeless, family violence, veterans, healthcare, even Section 8 vouchers, public housing, workforce, substance abuse, mental health. So it's the idea of connecting and coordinating programs and funding and kind of just getting everyone to row in the same direction. There are a number of different structures that communities use to have their continuum of care. Across the nation, about 9% are just urban city boundaries. Those probably would be very large cities that have their continuum of care just in a city. Over half are single counties, about a third are regions. And then the rest that aren't covered by 1, 2, and 3 are called balance of state. And we have a balance of state in Oregon called the rural Oregon continuum of care. And then about 2%, six states are, the entire state is a continuum of care because their population is so small. So how this plays out in Oregon, as you can see, Old名, Washington, Clackamas, Lane, and Jackson, all are single county continuums of care. We have one region, Central Oregon, Deschutes, Jefferson, and Crook. And then all the rest of the counties, including Marion Polk and Anne Hill, are in a 28-county balance of state. And I'll pause here to have Jimmy talk about the impact of that.
So that's an enormous continuum. It is, if you were to add up all the square miles associated with it, it would be equal to the 16th largest state in the United States. And we struggle sometimes just to talk across town between Marion County and Polk County. And imagine trying to coordinate something as large. It went from Ontario on one side of the state all the way over to the Pacific Ocean, which went from the Columbia River all the way down to California. And because we are struggling so much to collaborate and to develop good data systems across such a very large area, that's one of the reasons you're going to hear in a few moments about the score of the rural Oregon continuum of care versus the average scores around the United States, that the funding situation is what it is as a result of all of that. It is something that is extraordinarily large. And we have seen, as the last few months, the last few years have unveiled itself, that it's almost unwieldy in order to be able to achieve the best outcome we've been hoping for.
So HUD talks about in this Continuum of Care 101 document, there's advantages and disadvantages of having a large region or this balance of state, 28 counties. So advantages, as you can imagine, is if you pool your dollars and pool your numbers and have a lot of small counties, you're going to be able to have more impact, right? And also, if you have some communities that do some things well and other communities that do other things well, as you know, when you network and work together, you can actually benefit from that. On the flip side, and we've experienced these disadvantages of Marion and Polk County being in the rural Oregon continuum of care, if you're 28 counties stretching that far, you're definitely not including all of the partners that you have in your community that are addressing your local needs. You're not even at 20,000-foot level. You're like about 50,000-foot level. And so what you're going to need is to have a substructure out of that large region that would focus on those unique community issues. Unfortunately, there was an attempt to do that. Jimmy, you want to talk about that?
Sure. A couple of years ago, we tried to put together a coordinated entry work group. And we'll talk a little bit more about coordinated entry later. Essentially, the idea was we would bring all the partners together to kind of create the structure that we're going to be describing in a few moments on our own. But trying to do that without any government overstructure, without any government oversight, especially with the authority the government has to make sure and to insist upon due diligence, to insist upon good outcomes, to insist upon that the resources that are coming into the community are used in a responsible and effective way. That was a, we couldn't get everybody to agree that we ought to go towards a system that provided more long-term stability, provided more resources, and provided more oversight to make sure that those resources were being used well.
The other disadvantage that HUD points out is that even though the data we collect is local and Community Action actually collects the data, sends it into that 28-county balance of state continuum of care, it then gets aggregated with 26 other counties. And the data that goes into the federal government that's posted on the website is a gargantuan set of data where you can't figure out where your own community sits. And we haven't been able to do that well with the data disaggregation. So how did we get here? Well, up until, from 1994 up until 2011, Marion and Polk Counties had our own continuum of care. Community Action staffed that continuum of care. They did not draw down federal dollars to do that. The dollars that came in from the federal government were based on need. There was a formula. So you did your count and figured out how many homeless people you had. You looked at your general population, all the poverty, some other types of factors. And then a formula was created and you got dollars based on that. As we moved towards 2012, a big change happened with HUD and the continuum of care. So they wanted more data-driven services. They developed a homeless management information system and asked all communities to start entering data into that system. And they started moving the funding mechanism, the formula, from need to performance. So how you were performing in the programs that were funded by HUD started being the main way that the dollars were calculated. The Community Action staff that were, you know, they had a day job in addition to doing the continuum of care, saw those requirements coming down. And I actually had lunch with Carla, who was the person that worked at Community Action at the time. And I've known her for a long time. And she just said that there was just no way that they could manage that, you know, without any dollars coming down or additional staff support. So rural Oregon continuum of care made an offer to Marion and Polk continuum of care and said, hey, come over with us. We'll provide the staff support. You won't have to manage it anymore. We will hold your programs harmless and at least initially. And then we all want success, so we'll help your programs grow. We actually found the July 2011 minutes, which I have, and described the conversation that happened there. There were representatives from Rock at that meeting inviting the Marion and Polk representatives to do that. So there was a unanimous vote of the folks that were in the room to come join the rural Oregon continuum of care. Now, a couple of things kind of popped out when we looked at those minutes. One is that there was only one person from a governmental organization in the room, and that was a program-level person from the city of Salem. So no other jurisdictions were involved in that decision. I became the county commissioner in 2003. This happened eight years after I became a county commissioner. And until we had that task force in 2016, so five years after that, I had no idea this happened. Shaun, who was O'Day from COB, was the deputy city manager at City of Salem. He said that they did not hear about it even though they had a program staff person in the room. It just was not, it was a consortium of nonprofits that were running it, and it just kind of stayed in that nonprofit world. But Jimmy, maybe you can talk about the checking the boxes about what happens when people apply these dollars.
So every year, every community has to put together what is generally referred to as a collaborative application to HUD to apply for federal funding. And so that is a very complicated and a very simple document at the same time. But essentially, what it does is it asks a series of questions. And a series of questions essentially are trying to draw out the degree to which you're complying with federal regulations. And then this very large balance of state continuum. And one of the odd things about the balance of state system is that it was primarily designed based upon the east coast of the United States, where states are geographically much, much smaller than they are the western part of the United States, where it's very difficult to administer these large balance of state systems. So getting back to the original point, though, when you complete this application, there are a number of boxes that have to be checked off. Do you have adequate HMIS coverage, the homeless management information system? Your data systems are adequate? Do you have community buy-in? Are you working with all the partners, funded and non-funded, in your community to achieve the best outcome and the best leverage that you have with all of your dollars? There's even a section on that collaborative application which says you have sought the permission of your local city governments, your local county governments, your local community to submit this application on their behalf. Well, the funny thing that happened somewhere along the way in that eight-year period in time, no one ever asked anybody. They never went to Polk County Commissioners, they never went to the Marion County Commissioners, they never went to the city of Salem. I dare say they probably did not come out here to Monmouth or Independence and ask your permission as well. But every year, after year, they continue to submit that application stating that they have the full support of everyone in the community. And that would be spectacular if everybody was actually participating in those conversations and everybody was trying to make sure that all the resources we have, not just the federal ones, but the state and local funds as well, were sort of being used in a targeted way to achieve the best homeless outcomes that we possibly could. So that's sort of the matrix for it. The other bit that I've mentioned there is that this is a very different system than what most people are familiar with in the sense that we're not in competition so much with other areas in Oregon. Polk County isn't in competition with Marion County. Marion and Polk are not necessarily in competition with Portland. They are, but really, this is a nationwide competition, a nationwide competition. So we are competing here in Marion Polk with Topeka, Kansas, and Portland, Maine, with Birmingham, Alabama. It is a nationwide competition. And unless you have nearly perfectly functioning systems, you stand no chance whatsoever to get adequate resources from the federal level into your community. We'll talk more about what that scoring mechanism looks like in a few moments.
So the balance of state continuum of care, rural Oregon continuum of care, is administered by the Community Action Partnership of Oregon, which is the Association of the Community Action Directors across the state. It is to Community Action Directors what the League of Cities is to you all, right? So they have membership of all the directors. They pay dues into the organization. They have an executive director. And then that director has hired a couple of staff people that manages this 28-county balance of state continuum of care. So why are we suggesting that it's time to change? And why make the change now? Well, first of all, I think that we can all agree that homelessness has become a pretty prominent problem across not just our region, but the state of Oregon and the nation. You hear a lot more news stories about homelessness. You hear a lot more about communities investing significant dollars into addressing homelessness. There's a greater public awareness about it. There's also, I think, a greater expectation on the part of the public that government step in and try to address the problem. And then, as I mentioned earlier, it's such a complex problem that it's really difficult to know how to address it. One of the things we learned in the Midland Homeless Initiative is that if you have a strategy that works for veterans, it's not necessarily the same strategy that's going to work for runaway and homeless youth, or domestic violence victims, or someone who's suffering from chronic homelessness, which would be a mental illness, substance abuse, or some other disabling condition. So that's been an issue. There's really no designated entity, as Jimmy said, that there, you know, there can be voluntary groups that come forward. We have a million, I'm type A, so I round up, but a million task forces that, and committees and groups. I'm sure you've had groups locally that are interested in addressing homelessness. I know that we've had them over in Marion County. But none of those groups is looked at as kind of the go-to legitimate group, you know, the hub, like who's on first with homelessness. And you look around and there's just a lot of different groups working on it, a lot of different aspects of it. There are also a lot of groups that are collaborating around issues that relate to homelessness, but they're not necessarily addressing homelessness itself. So that would be your public safety councils, or your mental health organizations, or folks working on employment, or domestic violence, or substance abuse. And then there have been some capacity and performance issues with the rural Oregon continuum of care. And with that, I'll turn it over to Jimmy to describe that scoring process he talked about earlier.
So let's get back to this nationwide competition for a second. So every spring, we begin this process of preparing the application. It's submitted in the summer. And then by December of every year, usually, it was a little later this year because the government shut down, the federal government announces all the awards to all the continuums across the United States. The range of scoring on this application is zero at the very bottom to 200 points at the very top. So the Rock, the rural Oregon continuum of care, those 28 counties of which Marion and Polk are apart, scored 138.75 on the last competition. So that number doesn't mean anything to anybody unless you know what the mean is, right? You know what the mid-level of the total application score was. So the mean is 160. So already, we're 22 points on that application below 500, so to speak. But that's not really the magic number in all this conversation. The magic number is what they refer to as the weighted mean, which is 166. Anything above 166, and your continuum basically is getting everything that it asks for. It's getting not only its tier-one priority projects as they're described, but they're also getting their tier-two priority projects, or most of them. And in some cases, if you score a little bit above the weighted mean, HUD is actually coming back into a region and assigning hundreds of thousands, in some cases, like Houston, Texas, millions of extra dollars based upon these performance mechanisms. Now, the Rock as a whole is about 30 points below that weighted mean. And we have seen consistently over the last four or five years that it has been hovering in the same, same position. It's not making much in the way of improvements. It's not sliding down any further. But the danger in all of this is that historically, going back to 2012, prior to 2012, as Janet mentioned, all of these award decisions were based upon and predicated on a simple question. What was the need level of the community? What was the pro-rata need? And they took into consideration not only the size of your homeless population, but the percentage of people in the poverty, the total population, and all of several other demographic elements of a region. After 2012, they threw all of that out. And they decided that they went to award the continuums to the communities that are doing the best job that they possibly can with those federal dollars and throw extra money at them and began to take resources away from the poor performers as they saw. So the result of this is that increasingly, over the last six or seven years, that score that I mentioned, that 0 to 200 score, is being predicated on a higher and higher percentage of performance. And so right now, it's around 75%. And the next few years, it's going to go to 95%. So given the COC's historic and sort of long-term full performance, what you can actually expect out of this is a resource reduction. This year, for the first time, we lost a tier-one project. We had never lost a tier-one project before. And as competition increasingly is more geared up toward performance, you can expect the same kind of outcomes in the future. So what's being measured, just very briefly? There are a number of factors that are being measured. HUD federally is looking at, when you take somebody out of homelessness and you put them into housing, they expect you to do a lot of things with that household. The first and foremost important thing that they expect you to do is for them not to return to homelessness, right? Because then you wasted their opportunity. You hung an eviction on them, and you wasted the resources you might have more smartly used on somebody else. So that's one of the biggest no-no's. They're looking for rates of return to homelessness. They're also expecting you to increase their income so that when the support is drawn away, they'll be able to provide, you know, for themselves. So there are literally dozens and dozens of different performance metrics in these populations of that performance. But increasingly across the state, because there hasn't been a whole lot of government involvement, most frankly and most directly, the impetus to make sure that that competition scores are the best they possibly can be just hasn't been there. To the south of us, Lane County, they are a very high-performing COC. You'll get some information about that in a moment. To the north of us, Clackamas County, they scored 190 out of those 200 points. It was the highest-performing continuum of care in the United States.
So we have folks we can learn from. So in terms of the numbers of homeless individuals, where you look at this balance of state, that's what BOS stands for, Rural Oregon Continuum of Care, or even balance of state. In 2018, just in terms of homeless individuals, we were ninth in the nation. And with chronically homeless, which is a subset of that number, so these are folks who have been homeless for a year or more, or homeless three times in the last 36 months, or at least 12 months, I must have a disabling condition. I don't have my reading glasses on right now, sorry. We were 10th in the nation. And yet, when you look at the resources that we have for Marion and Polk within that balance of state, and before I get into this, I want to clarify, because the minute that we started saying we were going to do this, and actually Kevin Cameron and Colin Willis, the Marion County Commissioners, two county commissioners, went back to TC and talked to HUD. And everyone is saying to them, locally at the regional office in here, don't do it if it's for the money, because you're not guaranteed, you're not going to get up to these high levels of dollars immediately. And so I always tell folks, this isn't about the money. And yet I also have the caveat that it's always about the money. So I want to show you kind of what's going on with the money. But yet, the primary reason to do this is not necessarily to just get more dollars. But going through this, when you look from 2005 to 2010, so this is just some trend data to show where we were at before we moved into the rural Oregon continuum of care. So you started out at about $727,000 in 2005, and by 2010, you were up to $954,000. And then there was this meeting in July 2011, and the promise that would hold the programs harmless. And so in 2012, you look and there was a bump up. And in 2013, you were almost exactly where you were in 2010. And then, starting in 2014, you can see significant drops in the Marion and Polk amounts. And yet, you can see, even though the balance of state has been a poor performer, so they haven't grown like others have grown, they haven't lost money either. And so Marion and Polk's proportion of those dollars has gone from, you've got the percentages.
It's about, if you go to 2012, it went from about 34% of the Marion and Polk total allocation down to, in 2018, it's about down to 21%. So as the total raw numbers have increased from 2011, about 2.6 up to 3.2 million, you see Marion and Polk's share of that has been steadily decreasing and decreasing and decreasing. And that arc is a long trend at this point. It's about seven years.
And then I'm going to have Jimmy talk about this slide as well, because he had a methodology that he used to come up with this slide.
So prior to starting to work with Community Action Agency in Marion and Polk County, I'd worked for homeless services up in Clark County in Washington. And what I was doing up there was working to develop coordinated entry systems. And that's my specialty and my background in homeless services. So when I moved down here and started looking at all the resources that were coming into the Marion and Polk community, I looked at local commitment. I looked at the state commitment, which in this state is pretty good. But then when I looked at the federal commitment to the rural Oregon continuum of care, I was sort of shocked, frankly, because we have this extraordinarily large homeless population, ninth-largest homeless population in the United States per the point in time count, 10th-largest chronically homeless population. And so when I looked at the total allocation of about 3.2 million dollars, I thought to myself, well, this doesn't make a whole lot of sense. On the one hand, most of us would say that 3.2 million dollars is a lot of money. On the other hand, when we look at it and consider it in the context of the size of the homeless population, it's virtually a drop in the bucket from where the actual need really is. So I began by asking myself a few questions. What does this look like in context with other continuums in the region? And so I put together some information on the most well-funded continuums locally. And those are the ones you see there on the left. And now, all of those things have in common the fact that they're mostly urban continuums. And so the game has always been sort of working against rural areas when it comes to HUD nationally. And that's something that goes back more than 30 years. The big cities have always, you know, the game was sort of rigged in their favor from the very beginning. So when you look at those places, you know, Washington County, Multnomah, Clackamas County, and Vancouver, those are all very well-funded COCs. The ones on the right, however, are rural, in, took the most part, in the way HUD considers them. And so what I did was I took the total allocation, the 3.2 million dollars here, for example, and divided it by the number of homeless individuals in the continuum. And that's where those numbers on the board came forward. So where I was working before, Vancouver got $2,500 per homeless person per year in their continuum to help serve those individuals. Lane County, a very well-functioning COC to the south, gets about $2,400 per year per person on the pit camp. But in the Rock, we're only getting about $550 per person per year in that continuum. So it's basically five to one difference between us and the well-functioning continuums that sort of surround us.
So hopefully we have your attention and have given you some of the reasons why we did this analysis and what we learned when we did the analysis. The policy, the key policy question that we are asking at this point in the process is, should the region establish is, should the region establish its own continuum of care? The steering committee that met, and Scott and Tom will serve on the steering committee, took a vote at the end of March and said, yes, we recommend to the jurisdictions that we should. So the recommendation to the jurisdictions and the staff recommendation was also yes, that we should, based on this money analysis, on the opportunities for coordination, for better planning, for local control, for the evidence that our dollars are being spread around across the state, across 28 counties, and aren't coming back to the people that need it here. And then these attempts, because my first question when I heard about it is, well, could we make it work within this 28 counties and do a smaller process? And then when Jimmy said, I've tried that, and then they've done that, and it wasn't very successful. So we really feel like this is the right thing to do. And if you agree with this, we do have a template for a model resolution that we would ask any interested jurisdictions to consider, and then we're going to put together a packet of information to HUD that is due by the end of this year. This is going to show the support from Marion County, Polk County, and all the various cities that are interested in weighing in on this issue. The second policy question that we're going to actually work on over the course of the next few months, once we get past the, should we do this, which we're in the, actually, probably the last six weeks of that conversation, is what organizational structure is recommended for new continuum of care? How many jurisdictions? And we just made the presentation to Yamhill County this afternoon, we also talked with the Confederated Tribes of Grand Ron, the tribal council this morning. So there are some organizations, and they cross, of course, Polk and Yamhill County as well. So that, when we send a letter to, a formal letter to the Rural Order of Continuum of Care and say, we're moving out, and we need to actually say in the letter also, and it will be Marion and Polk Counties or Marion, Polk, and Yamhill Counties, however that structure is going to look. And then we need to put together a board, steering committees, some committees. The folks that are listed here under representation are all out of the Continuum of Care 101 book. These are the, kind of at a minimum, the different sectors that HUD would like us to have represented around the table in different forums. There are a number of board requirements. We need a governance charter, a written process, we need to be cognizant of conflict of interest and develop a policy, we need to hold meetings, appoint members, that's pretty straightforward. There are planning requirements, and we mentioned there, around the dollars, you have to do this comprehensive application. It involves the point in time count, which Community Action has been providing for this region for some time now. A gaps analysis, those 550 programs I talked about at the outset, so we're in pretty good shape there, and the consolidated plan information. And we'd like to, actually, once we get the governance structure up and running, we'd like to jump in in the fall and start that planning process so that when next spring comes and the application goes in, we're ready to go and aren't waiting until the last minute and then trying to slam something together to do a quality job. Coordinated entry is one of the two things we, Marion County has a lobby firm that they retained for longer than I was the county commissioner, they were there when I got there. They do a great job, and they were able to connect us with the officials at the central office in Washington DC, and we talked about this. And it's interesting, because they have actually provided us with technical assistance, and we had that call from the technical assistance firm yesterday. And the two things that they immediately asked us is, so what's your capacity for the homeless management information system? And Jimmy, Community Action actually provides that data, so we're in really good shape there. And then, how are you doing with coordinated entry? And I'm going to have Jimmy describe coordinated entry for you.
Just very briefly, coordinated entry is a set of best practices and philosophies that are put in place by HUD nationally to make sure that all the resources that are coming in, especially the federal resources, but in theory, in practice, the ideal practice would be all resources, state, local, and federal, are being used in the smartest possible ways. So we have this real sort of irony in homeless systems. For the last 30 years, we've tried to do things one particular way, we embraced this sort of housing-ready model, which turned out to be successful about 25% of the time. We threw it out in favor of the housing-first model, that's successful about 85% of the time. But we've also discovered in that 30 years that we have wasted hundreds of millions of dollars generally on housing the wrong individuals, especially low-needs individuals who would statistically have rehoused on their own about 95% of the time, and ignored, because they're hard to work with, because they're difficult, people with substance abuse problems and mental health problems and chronic physical health problems, ignored the chronically homeless and left them outside for a generation. So coordinated entry is a way to address all that. The idea behind it is to create a prioritization system of people with high needs, medium needs, and low needs, and to throw most of your resources at the high needs and higher-medium needs population, because those are folks individually and statistically who will never rehouse on their own. And when I say never, I mean absolutely never. So the coordinated entry process is essentially designed to collect a lot of data and a lot of information. So my agency, as a result of this coordinated entry process, and this is my specialty in homeless services, I designed a coordinated entry system that's in place in 28 of the 36 Oregon counties, and it does essentially two things. One, it collects a tremendous amount of demographic information. So we get information on age, racial composition, ethnic backgrounds, all those sorts of things, in addition to things like income levels, criminal status, anything that might be a barrier at all to housing. And we've learned a lot in terms of, you know, you're talking about 100 data points for 6,000 individuals, 600,000 data points on the homeless and housing and stable population in Marion and Polk County, which is about 1.3% of the entire population. So we probably have the best data from the homeless population in the entire state as a result of it. So what it taught us was that one quarter of the homeless have had an eviction in the last seven years, 33% are currently on parole probation, 38% have had a felony in the last five years. The median income is zero, which you would sort of expect, but of the half of the population that do have income, the median income for that subset is $8,800 a year, which is social security disability, generally not collective individuals who are going to be able to work their way out of their homelessness. So we have this massive amount of information on what the situation and reality is for the homeless population. And then the other half of the information is generated by an assessment tool that I brought to this particular community and a trained, dozens of people now use the tool, called the VI-SADAT. And that's a terrible acronym for a pretty good tool. It's called the Vulnerability Index Service Prioritization Decision Assistance Tool. It was named by an outfit in Canada called Work Code, which invented it. And so I like to joke sometimes that Canada gave us William Shatner and Justin Bieber and Drake and the VI-SADAT. But the range on this thing goes from zero at the bottom, people who've never been homeless before, don't have all these barriers, and 20 at the top. And these are people who are essentially dying outside. So what it's very, very good at doing is breaking people down into three needs groups and sort of suggest what kind of housing they need to go into. Very high-needs group, who need longer-term supportive housing, the case managers and that sort of thing. A middle-needs group who need up to two years' placement, and then a low-needs group on the other end, who probably are going to rehouse on their own, but boy, if you could come along with a deposit, maybe one month's rent, that would be all you really need to kick them back out of homelessness and into housing. So as a result of that, we have a method now to be able to treat this as a public health problem, which is really what homelessness is, to treat it as a public health problem using these data-generated tools and an objective criteria that HUD really, really wants every community in the United States to be doing.
So the last area in determining the governance structure is the capacity to do the accountability requirements, the contracts with providers, will want to monitor performance, analyze data, take action against poor performers, do this coordinated process that Jimmy just described, enter data into the HMIS homeless management information system. So we'll need to select a lead organization, that has not been done yet either. Council of Governments has been hosting the Midland Homeless Initiative, they're a candidate for this, but not the only candidate. HUD talks about a coalition model, that was what we did up till 2011. There are advantages and disadvantages to each, and I won't read them to you, but I think one of the issues that we ran into that HUD talks about here in theory that we saw in practice is that when you have a coalition model and you don't have the governments at the table, and you don't have prominent people at the table that can lead it, you end up doing a lot of things under the radar and you don't have that ability to sustain. The government leadership model, and it doesn't mean that governments are the only ones at the table, they certainly share that with the nonprofits and providers of homeless services, but it is more sustainable. Governments are used to attracting quality staff that can do planning and that can do monitoring of providers and holding people accountable. And then the third is a nonprofit organization, which may work in a large city, where you have great big nonprofits, but we don't have huge nonprofits here in this community, a lot of small nonprofits, and oftentimes, they kind of struggle, and you also have the issue of conflict of interest, because probably most nonprofits that are going to be involved are going to want to be able to participate in the funding process, so funding one that's not could be an issue. We're looking at three staff. The HMIS staff is currently being provided by Community Action, and Jimmy's graciously said he'll continue doing that as we move through the transition, so we'll be looking at hiring a staff leader position and a technical staff position. We're going to be working Jen Calvin, who is sitting in the second row here, has just started in April 1, because as you heard, I'm moving to Idaho. So she's going to be moving forward as a person on the ground here, I'm going to continue to help her so that we keep the continuity with the process behind the scenes, but on a very minimal basis. She's making appointments to talk about the continuum of care with all these different early learning, HUD, the service integration teams, the county health advisory boards, and so forth. Won't belabor the changes that need to occur, because we pretty much talked about that all the way through, but more strategic, planning is more strategic, better leverage, a legitimate go-to hub. And then looking at what those community issues are, because I can guarantee you, Monmouth and Independence's issues are not going to be the same as Salem's, not going to be the same as Silverton's, Marion and Polk Counties are not the same. So we need to make sure that we understand the uniqueness of each community as we develop that regional approach. Lane County, as we talked about, has done a great job with their continuum of care. They have a number of committees, they have an intergovernmental agreement where Springfield, Eugene, and Lane County actually designate dollars, and this group oversees them. They have action-oriented people, it's in their charter that that's who they want. No one who serves on the board in a voting position can have a conflict of interest. We have four people for Marion and Polk County, three people.
Four.
And at least two of them get funding from the continuum of care right now, through the Rural Order of Continuum of Care. So that's probably one of the issues that they have with the scoring. They're living document, their strategic plan is very specific, talks about specific numbers of units, takes all the money, not just a little bit of money. Clackamas, that got the highest score in the nation, has a steering committee that's their governance board, this is just right off their website, an operations council, a policy committee, they all feed into each other, they have really specific goals and objectives as well. So the change process, and I'm trying to break, because I know that you want to have a few minutes for questions here, is that we would be applying for funding about the same time next year, so in 2020. And then, once that application goes in, the announcements don't come in until about December of 2020, and then the dollars would come here in April of 2021. So even though we're talking today about it's going to be a two-year process before we actually get from where we are to where we think we need to be. And I've gone through all of the next steps, I think. So with that, I will close and see if you have questions.
Questions for the speakers? There's a lot of information, go ahead, please.
A few things. The Independence Council received an email from a local developer yesterday or today pertaining to issues of homelessness, and characterized it as a residual problem in Portland. Now, this is me that, so I think the paper you mentioned very early on in the presentation would be great to have. Okay, Chris and Fox. The numbers you talked about, by the way, in Marion and Polk, and almost 6,000 in Washington County, is there something that shows what that actually, what the benefit of that was? Or where the gaps are? I mean, you really get $600 per person per year, and Washington gets almost $6,000 per person per year, are they making better strides at all with this issue than we are? Are we getting anywhere?
It is all performance-related, and it's all really, so when I say performance-related, there's this software system, it's a database called the Homeless Management Information System. And so there are a series of markers in there, getting back to a couple of things I said earlier. The first and most basic level is, are all of the 16 universal data elements entered into HMIS? So if you don't put somebody's social security number in, for example, you get deemed for that. If you leave their birthday out, you get deemed for that. If you don't put in a racial or ethnic report, you get deemed for that. And so that's just the baseline. If you're not doing well with that, you're certainly not going to do well with more complicated questions. It might be things like, you put somebody into housing, but six months later, they got evicted, so you're going to get penalized for that. You were supposed to increase this permanent supportive housing population's income by 25%, but you only increased it by 10%. You get deemed for that. So they are making absolute sure that their data quality, which is what a lot of this gets back to, is nearly perfect. But they have a government structure in Clark County above them to make sure that there's a hammer, so to speak. If they don't, they're not going to get funded, somebody else is going to get funded.
But I think, Jimmy, I hear what the question is, is whether or not Washington County lift up $6,000 per person is actually making better strides in helping the homeless.
So yes, and no, at the same time. So the iron law of homelessness, one of them anyway, is that the public never really sees the work that's done. You only see the work that's not done. And so we have experienced a homeless disaster on the West Coast the last 20 years. There's a huge number of people outside. And we have housed, even the Community Action Agency in Salem that I run, we've housed in the last 18 months, we've housed nearly 600 households with more than 1,000 homeless individuals in them. But no one's going to see that, because they're all in housing. We'll only see the people who are still outside. And getting back to your other question, there is no statistical evidence at all that Portland's homeless population is causing any problems in Monmouth and Independence. So you may have heard about the City of Salem's Hardest to House Program, the Top 100. So I designed the interfaces to all of that and controlled everybody that goes into it. And so I was worried very early on that people would come saying, well, you're just going to make things so nice here, every homeless person in Maryland is going to want to come to Salem, Oregon, and get housing here. Y'all have probably heard that at some point in time, every time this conversation comes up. So from the very beginning, I started tracking where everybody was born, how long they lived here, when they became homeless. And the interesting thing about that is, most of them really weren't born in Salem. But if we went around this room, probably a lot of y'all weren't born in Oregon either, because of the way in which people move around the country. Almost all of them had lived in Marion or Polk County for 10 to 15 years or more. Something, somewhere along the way happened to them. They lost a job, they got a divorce, they went to prison, they developed a substance abuse problem, a thousand other things. And so they went outside, and they stayed outside, because our systems have not been adequate to help them get back inside. But that whole Portland thing is just, it's not true.
One final question. Yes, Clackamas has done such a great job in the top one in the nation. They're largely rural, too. I mean, yesterday, my colleague kind of been a larger rural. Can you learn anything?
It's how the federal government classifies them, really.
Have you worked with them?
Absolutely. We've been in contact with them. And Chris Coy, who is the council president in Salem, actually was on their continuum of care committee, because he was a Clackamas, he just retired, he was a Clackamas employee. So we're trying to get him to participate more on our steering committees. Counselor Lopez.
Thank you, Mary. I have two separate questions. First, you had mentioned moving away from the Rock, possibly into our own continuum of care. However, moving into our own continuum of care, there will be demonstrated lag between when we actually make the move or begin the process, to when we receive funding. Will there be a gap in the amount of dollars that we're receiving reflecting the lag? Or will we receive some of those dollars from Rock in the interim before we get going?
That's a great question. So we will be prioritizing dollars in an application process that happens a year from now. Those dollars will be a negotiation, HUD let us know this a couple of weeks ago when we had that phone call, between us and the Rural Order of Continuum of Care. What HUD said is, and what we heard from the technicalists, HUD said it lightly, the technical assistance people said it really bluntly, HUD does not want to get involved in the negotiation, and almost never get involved in the negotiation, and when they do, it's not good for either party, is what we were told. So what we want to do is look at, first of all, the programs that are in Marion and Polk Counties. And what the HUD folks in DC said is that those are the no-brainer programs. I mean, if we're providing services for residents of Marion and Polk County, we get those dollars. The dollars that are more iffy and on the table, and will probably be the subject of maybe not the smoothest negotiation, are going to be the planning dollars and the HMIS dollars. So they're administrative dollars that come kind of as a program, and so they benefit all 28 counties, and they're probably used to pay for that staff that they have for their own Rural Order of Continuum of Care. We are funded through the contributions of Monmouth, Independence, Salem, Marion County, and Kaiser through April of next year to be able to do this work, the application. So that's not a problem. If we want to hire the senior-level staff early, it could be a problem. But if we want to continue contracting, and if the jurisdictions choose to continue putting dollars in, as they have for the past couple of years. And also, Polk County has now said that they are very interested in joining this. We did the same presentation with them, and all three commissioners were very positive about it. We may have more jurisdictions putting dollars in, so that's our hope, is that we'll be able to have some local dollars to tide us over and then be able to start when those dollars flow in 2021. Another question that I asked about that is, what about the programs? And how, you know, do we end up in this awkward situation where we're the COC, but the dollars are still in Rock? are still in Rock? And what I learned was, and I didn't realize this, is that they don't have a unified funding agency model, which means that the contracts between the currently funded providers are between them and HUD. And that's another reason why they're not able to hold the providers accountable because they don't now hold the contract with the providers. So what this gentleman said, said on the phone is that those providers would continue to get their money because they're, it's late every year, so they'll have a 12-month worth of money and so we'll just pick it up. But we're going to have a unified funding agency model where we hold the money here and contract locally with those providers. So we'll hold them accountable.
So as, as a follow-up to that, and for clarity, it sounds like there is, is a potentiality to lose about nine months' worth of administrative dollars. Is that correct?
No, because it would be, they go on a federal fiscal year and so they start, they go from October to, no, is it October to September 30th, October 1st, September 30th? So those October 1 dollars are not announced until December and they don't come till April, but I think you can still spend them back. You know, so, right. So we'll get, I don't have all the details on that and I don't want to misspeak too much because we're still in these preliminary phases, but if you've dealt with federal programs, you probably know that it's a little bit sideways like that. But we won't, for the federal fiscal year that we apply for, we won't lose any dollars by the time, right?
My, my second question, which you, you actually touched on here, what other local jurisdictions have already, already voiced their support officially? You'd said that you've been in contact with Pope County, it sounds like a similar situation with Marion, you've been more tenuous with Yamhill County, but what, what actual organizations have officially voiced their support for this?
So we just sent the model template out last week, so Marion County's scheduling it. Pope County, I think, is scheduling it. I sent it directly to them. Salem, we met with last night in a work session and so they were all very favorable in the work session. They said that they would be putting the, the resolution on their agenda. Kaiser, we had an hour and 15 minutes with them last night, and doing the circuit. And they, they were also very positive about it. So I think at least those four jurisdictions are going to, Yamhill was also positive. Two commissioners expressed, I mean, they were ready to go today. A third commissioner is actually on their community action board and wanted to take the time to talk to partners before she committed. I think that's completely understandable, so we said, take the time you need, but, you know, keep us posted because it's going to make a difference for us, whether it's two or three counties moving forward in terms of how we arrange that government structure.
I have a couple of questions. First of all, the article or the email that was referred to earlier referenced a KOMO news article called Seattle is dying.
So that is a, I'm going to try to say this in the most nonparticular, kindest way I possibly can. It's basically a propaganda piece going around to try to stir up popular passions against the homeless population. So some of, as in very good, as these things are sometimes designed, there is a lot of truth in, in some of the details, but they also picked out the poster child in that for, you know, the worst possible homeless person that you could possibly find to represent that. The fact of the matter is Seattle isn't dying, it's one of the richest communities in the United States. If you look at their road rate, I mean, it does, they are, it is one of the best places to live in the United States. You run the metrics on every possible economic factor and its quality of life factor that you possibly can in Seattle, and Seattle is in the top 10 in the United States across the board. So it's basically a video, and I, I think people have sent it to me, I've seen it, it's a video designed to, to, it's red meat, designed to get people really upset and angry and to sort of take administrative action against the homeless population. The irony really is, at the end of the day, oh gosh, I got to stop. The irony is, we're blaming a population that's dying outside at about 52 years of age for killing Seattle when it's really the political and economic structure that put them in this particular place that's killing them. But, you know, that's, that's a longer conversation.
Okay, a couple more things. First of all, it sounds like this new format for funding would also take into account people who need to be institutionalized as well as being taken out of homelessness. So you mentioned something about caseworkers and so on. We have people who probably need to live under full-time care rather, they're not going to be self-sufficient and, and move on with their lives.
We really made a mistake in the, in the late 50s, early 60s. I mean, it's, mental health institutions in this country earn the terrible reputation that they have, right? So then the idea was, we're going to stop all that and most people will be better off not institutionalized.
Living with their own families.
Embrace, let them live with their own families and then kick them out, or let's embrace a community mental health, mental health model which no one ever funded. So we institutionalized about 460 per 100,000 population in 1958. By the end of 1980s, it was under 40 persons per 100,000 population. A lot of those individuals are the very same ones you see in downtown Salem right now, who I can't even put in housing because I'm afraid they'll burn the house down because they're so mentally ill. We need to kind of get back to a place where we can, we can find targeted outcomes for that handful of individuals who just, and most people, most people frankly, can be housed. But they're, you know, those few individuals like that, and I work with them every day, they just can't, not, not without supportive and supportive help.
And the last thing is, you mentioned having a meeting with the Pope County commissioners and meeting with different places. Can you let us know so we can be there and be supportive?
Sure, absolutely. We can send you the matrix that Jen has put together, all of the presentations that we've done. I have to do.
I guess I could, I'll ask a question. Could you take this from the 50,000-foot level and, and put it down into, you know, talk me through at a real nuts and bolts level with something? So all of a sudden, we get these additional dollars if we were able to get them. What kind of things would happen to, when you find somebody, because we're, we're starting to, we know we have people that live on bridges, we know we have people that are living in the backs of, behind buildings, in the shrubs, you know, we're starting to see those kind of things now. So what kind of things might we look forward in the future if, if the, if the funding moves forward?
So this is one piece in a much larger conversation. If you look at the state priorities, and I'm going to get myself in trouble again, if you look at the state property priorities for homelessness, it's primarily, if you look in the OHCS plan, State White Hat Plan, it's primarily the in-vetement homelessness, which tend to be not the people camping in the, in the hedges. It's also the in-family homelessness, or throw a lot of resources into that, which is also not the people living in the hedges. We still haven't had tough conversations in the state of Oregon about targeting high-needs chronic homelessness, the kinds that folks are most upset about. We just came from McMinnville and if you go, I don't know how many of y'all have been in that area recently, but you drive out near Wykap and over there near that park, it is lined, both streets are lined with RVs and tents and all kinds of things like that. So eventually, if we can have that conversation, if we can get more resources into the area, if I can get people to understand that the focus of this is a public health problem and this is a public health solution to a public health problem, we can target that. I housed 145 high-needs chronic life homeless individuals, the same people, same kind of people talking, you're talking about, living in those hedges in the city of Salem in the last two years, 145. The success, 135 of them are still in housing today after more than a year for most of them. This can be done, it's just we have to commit ourselves to taking federal approaches with best practice models toward this problem. If we don't do that, it won't matter, and I think that, I think Jennifer and I's principal point, one, anything else, is the money is secondary. It is the ability to collaborate and to organize and to work in a coordinated way towards solving this problem that is going to produce the greatest outcomes for the community. The money will follow. After we do things the right way long enough, the money will follow. But if we don't start working together on this in, in smart ways, you know, you think the homeless problem is bad now, give it another 20 years, going, growing at the rate that it's growing, and it, it'll be, it'll be much worse in Monmouth and Independence than what you're seeing right now. You're welcome.
Our public health official here, Public Health Alc. Depp.
We have, our federal, federal administration right now is kind of a law and order on people. Can you say, George, just take a guess at what would happen to your score if you make providing, planning for services for undocumented immigrants or ex-cons, particularly sexual predators in the whole plan? Because it seems like, it seems like when a person has been released from prison for sexual abuse, they have to, all the route, their neighbors have to be notified that they're living there, right?
There's essentially two outcomes. There's the, if you're homeless, it's a death sentence because there's no rehousing very much. Or you, I had, I saw homelessness for a few sex offenders by getting them to go to community college and getting a little job and getting some income and then buying a house, which is easier than renting for those particular folks. This is a, the same thing, the same things you're describing regarding this current administration were also true in the past 20, 25, 30 years too. All of those federal HUD rules sort of precluded services for those same individuals that you're talking about. Now, my state dollars are not restricted in that way. I can house sex offenders, I have housed sex offenders, it's just landlords generally won't work with them because of insurance-related issues in this community. The undocumented population is easier because as long as there's one person in the household, a child with a social security number, I can house that house in a hat. But there is a palpable fear, and you, working in public health, you know this, of folks in that community to seek any service whatsoever. And so I've tracked our, the percentages of the Latino population that we have served over the last two years, and there has been a drop of about 5% because some people just won't come to get assistance because they're afraid they're going to be arrested. And, Courtney.
We're good.
Any other questions from anybody? I just really want to thank you for, for including us on the road show.
Yes.
I really appreciate the efforts that, and I've had a chance to watch some of this over time and really appreciate the passion and the energy that, that you and others dealing with this. And you're absolutely right. You know, we're not going to run away from it, we're going to have to deal with it one way or another, and it doesn't matter if you're a big town or our community. And so, thank you very much for being here.
Yes, so I think our next steps are individually, we'll be looking at the sample resolution, having another work session discussion on it, determining where we want to go.
Sound good? Great?
Thanks for having us. Let's do this again.
So what we're going to do now is we'll adjourn the joint meeting and then in about 10 minutes or so, council members, Independence Council, we have, we have some legal stuff that we have to get done tonight. And so, but let's take about 10 minutes post-socializing and make stops. Sound good? Good to see all you folks?
Yes.
Thank you. Where, are you on Jason? Okay. Karen has to push the button. She didn't trust me to push the button, I might push the wrong button. First, I want to thank everybody for being here today. You didn't get as much notice as I might normally have wanted to, but we want to take advantage of the opportunity of the presenters and so thank you for, for adjusting life and, and fighting the bridge as getting to be here. Let the record show that everybody's here, we're going to move through promptly. The minutes from the 9th are in front of you, are they okay?
They are.
Is that a motion?
It's a motion. This is a second.
That's a second, all in favor, stick your five, we say aye.
Aye.
And opposed.
Questions, do I stand because I was absent from voting or can I still vote?
You can still vote.
Okay.
Thank you. Any visitor public comment? Okay, Mayor Report, I just wanted to keep you informed that there, well, one, there's a proclamation in there talking about the census, just wanted you to be informed about that. I'm still awaiting a couple of applications for Budget Committee, but since our timetable has been adjusted, we still have time, don't worry. I wanted to address Jennifer Ransom Smith's comment, she's indicated that Wynn Paye meets during the middle of the day. And she works in Salem and we all have the same problem, there are no counselor, all of us work. And so I just have, visited with Mayor Coontz as Jennifer did, and I know staff have, so they're working to try to come up with a, a way to have an evening meeting that, that makes sense. And so I just wanted to acknowledge that, that that's underway. Let's do, Counselor Hicks, do you want to do a little bit of a MyNet report, please?
Yeah, it would just be a kind of a reiteration to what the city manager report from last time, we haven't had a, we've started the budgeting process, but we haven't really had a formal meeting in a while. So MyNet was unable to secure the funding for the accelerated G-PON upgrade. And coincidentally, we're, there's kind of been an equipment shortage on some of the, the upgrade as well. So the accelerated upgrade process is still happening, but about as fast as possible. And also, there are now redundancies in place for their upstream providers. So the outage that happened the day before the high school meeting, sorry, I forget the date, but was because of an outage with our upstream provider. Now we have two providers that we can switch before, so if one goes down, you can switch to the other and we should not be seeing another outage like that.
Okay, very good.
Excellent.
Counselor Martin Willis, I think you have the next two.
I do. So we'll start with Parks and Rec, we met on 4/18. There was a proposal brought to us by Gully Wiseman, who heads up our local American Legion Post to install a flagpole at our museum, but it does not currently have a flagpole. And that's something that would be done at their expense. They would then like to be able to name a veteran of the month. There would be a standard flag that would weather-resistant, that would fly 724 parrot lighting. And then they would offer weather permitting, families of deceased veterans the opportunity to fly the flag that they then received at the funeral on that pole at some point during the month designated to their veteran. And that motion passed Parks and Rec unanimously. As probably not this year, but a future Arbor Day event, they may try to do something 4th of July, we're kind of working on dates, do a labeling of some of our park trees with carbon offset information. Just kind of make people aware that the trees in our community, being a Tree City USA, really do make a difference. And that they'll likely label the ones found by Osprey Point for the ribbon cutting of the hotel. As I think we're all pretty much aware, the Osprey pole was successfully relocated just in the nick of time and Osprey are happily residing in their relocated nests. And then that live feed will rely on the hotel Wi-Fi, so look for that coming soon. The, the parks held up well during the flood, some marked us floated away as was expected. There have been some adjustments made to the action plan to include the picking up of the pork potties at the dog park. The ones in the park were gotten, some others kind of floated away. There were some questions about skate park, those folks are still around, Monmouth seems interested in allowing that to be placed, actually on a section of property near the ball fields over by Hogan Road. That group is working to raise some seed money and staff at the city of Independence has expressed their willingness to help them find some additional grant money once they have a match. And that was pretty much it for Parks and Rec. Planning Commission did initially a work session with the Historic Preservation Group and kind of chatted about some of the changes to our historic code, trying to get some teeth in that a little bit while allowing folks some flexibility and wanting them to come to the city for advice and help on historic properties. At the actual Planning Commission meeting, we got an update on the Brandy Meadows subdivision from Harvey Cummings, and those drawings are likely to be part of the future public hearing. Phase one is going smoothly. Phase two, sounds like there's 72 lots, including rep houses duplexes with quad units on the corner. And as that project expands south, to anticipate higher density housing. There were some visitor concerns that some Set Meadows has a different grading standard than some of the existing homes. Zach Pelts was in attendance and did respond that the new subdivision standard was to not adversely affect the existing properties. And they'll kind of take a look at that new grading that's going on. We approved a conditional use for St. Patrick's Church, allowing two additional modulars. They have 6.25 acres there, they're running some classes that are getting crowded, so we can't be bringing in new folks to that area, but that are accommodating folks that are incoming from those programs. And the church is going to take care of some drainage issues that they have on the property with some neighbors, so they're working together to get along and get the problem resolved. And that is your planning commission. And that is your planning commission report.
Thank you. There was lots of input in there.
Yeah. I mean, it was like, I'm glad I went.
Lots of stuff going on. Well, Mr. City Manager, Paul's in your card.
Sure, yeah. Mayor and Councilor, I have some items, but kind of before I start here, I just kind of want to follow up on the work session we just had with Monmouth and kind of ask just a general question. Is there any concern about bringing forward a resolution to you guys on that next level meeting on subjects that we're reviewing and some other things?
Pretty okay? We're okay?
Good. Well, I'll, I'll make sure that gets through forward, and we'll look for our Monmouth process and that would be your stuff, but it seems like a great issue to be tackled in the community. Councilor Martin?
Many want to show it around. This is going to be room 207. They have a 67-year-old male conscious found trip from the city.
Yeah, just to turn the sound up on the unit. But essentially, we, the river, it came up, it came about a foot below the minimum flood stage level, and it, it did some damage, but overall, I think things survived really well, especially in Independence Park where we had plants that really hadn't had a chance to get in, greased into the ground. Kudos to the contractor for, for sinking those trees really well. Mistaking them in a way so they could collect the debris as things came through, which is kind of definitely going to be something you have to pay attention to in that park because, like Riverview Park where it kind of just pools in there, we definitely seen flow come across and it's that debris that comes with it can actually touch on things and then provide a surface area to move things around. So, but all in all, it looks like from what I've heard from public works, we're tracking about $25,000 in damage for all of the parks and trails and, and stuff that we have. So certainly, we're going to be working to see if we can't miss them. Some money's back on that either through our insurance company or the county. But overall, I think the county needs to get up to about $300,000 in damage before they can apply for money to see any, and they, at least this, because of today, they feel like they're going to get there. So, we will see. I just wanted to let Council know that I am making a policy change, the employee policy manual. This is something that I think some miners and I don't need to bring it to you, but basically, a number of years ago, the state changed the agreement law provisions, which basically allow for certain defined family members, they're allowed to two weeks of agreement leave in the first two months after a family member passes. And our current policy didn't reflect that, so we've made that adjustment, and I'll put that in place. I'd like to let you know before I do it. On May 2nd, there is going to be a sheriff auction for the property on 12th and D Street. It's a Palmer Ochoa property. And the City of Independence initiated this action because we owed about $32,000 on that property. So we will be making a, a written offer to protect our interests. I don't want to give them the details of what we're going to do, but certainly, that will be an auction where people can come in and bid on the property. We're hoping that the bids are high enough to pay for the money that we owed, as well as the administrative costs reflected with that. But we'll have to wait and see. The house is not in great condition, but certainly the property has the value in itself. So, that will be proceeding, and there is information on the website, the county's website. We're very good. But I would, did want to let you know. On May 14th, there is going to be a Vision 2040 Ice Cream Social Kickoff, so we officially kick off of the 2040 Vision Plan. Very exciting. It will be between 5:00 and 7:00 PM at the library, and there's going to be a short speaking program around 5:45, but it really is more of a, an activity, engagement opportunity to kind of get things kicked off, have some, some stream and meet some, some people as we really begin the engagement process, which is getting underway for quite a while, as we hear what the community wants. Then, wanted to announce that our police department received accreditation for the second time here recently. I'm going to kind of read a part of what was sent out. But the Oregon Accreditation Alliance is proud to announce that the Independence Police Department, led by Chief Robert Hayes, have received their second consecutive award of law enforcement accreditation. Accreditation means that an agency or operations management policies and procedures meet the best practices the industry has to offer. The accreditation process in general is a progressive and contemporary way of helping law enforcement agencies evaluate and improve their overall performance and provides formal and professional recognition that an organization meets or receives best practices, expectations of service and quality in the profession. There are currently 49 law enforcement and 91 agencies of fully accreditation. And so, you know, I've been on the other side of this. We're putting together the accreditation stuff, and it is a lot of work. It is not simply your following best practices. You have to prove you follow best practices, and you have to prove it by providing a lot of documentation and making sure that documentation is maintained on a regular basis. And I, I believe the chief told me that Sergeant Justin Hedlund is the person who does most of that work, so kudos to him and to the people that have helped him to get that done, because it is not a little work, it is a lot of work, and it is a testament that our police department is really trying to lead community policing in a proactive and positive way. So, so thank you. So, with that, I'm going to go with a question. There's some staff.
Questions for the manager?
Just a comment really. I just wanted to take a moment to thank all the city employees who were at the 20 Vision New thing last night. Now, it's after a long day of work, and it was, it was a long evening as well. But in particular, Michelle Olufsen just really brought a lot of energy to the process. And not just that, but the old Billy's Playground. She really tried hard to get that thing going. So, I'd like to give her a lot of kudos, her and Ramon.
Well, thank you. Thank you. I don't want to try and pass it on to her. Yeah, this is an exciting project. I think we're all excited about it, so, so it's exciting.
And it's pretty cool. So, the officers here today, congratulations. You know, you get a lot of things once, but to get it a second time, that's harder.
We know how.
So, congratulations on behalf of myself and our council. Okay, let's move forward. I think somebody's going to make a presentation on a liquor license. Please, just breezy.
Good evening. How are you guys today? So I have three action items for the city. Maybe you should have been in the back here.
They are?
I'll just start, I have the Invenz Grill first.
Yes.
Is that, okay. So, Invenz Grill has applied for a liquor license with the old CC for full premise license application, allowing to sell wine, malt beverages, ciders, hard alcohol. It's a new application that the property is owned by Janine and Renee Greenberg. They recently purchased it from a previous owner, Greg Peterson. He has agreed to graciously stay on board and act as the cook and kind of like mentor while they get their feet wet in that business venture. The general operations of the business and the actual location are, are not really going to change a whole lot. They're still going to have a full menu, drink, food options, hours. I believe we're going to be 8:00 AM to 2, I'm sorry, 11:00 AM to 9:00 PM Monday to Friday, and then 8:00 to 9:00 on Saturday, 8:00 to 4:00 on Sunday. So it's Tuesday to Friday they close on Mondays. They, they started that business, purchased it with their own funds as well as a personal loan from a family member. So I did complete a background check on both of them. I believe there was a little discrepancy in maybe the understanding of what questionnaire they got sent out related to some financial responsibility stuff. But after speaking with both of them, the information that they answered on there and what I noted, I believe is, is older in nature, and I think it was just more of a misunderstanding of what it was and intent to like mislead anyone about any information. So based on that, I don't believe that I have any sort of related to that application. And I believe that all of the necessary to even pay up to this state.
Does anybody have any public comment related to this? Councilor, do you have any questions?
Do we want to combine?
Can we, Karen, do you want individuals or combined?
Individuals.
Okay. If someone would so.
I move to recommend approval of the above liquor license request upon payment of all fees.
Second.
Motion, second discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Much care.
Which one do you guys have next?
I have Lucky Dragon.
Perfect. So the Young Ho Ho Restaurant Incorporated, which is doing business as a Lucky Dragon Restaurant, is located at 111 Polk Street. They made an application also for a full on-premise sales license, which will allow for malt beverages, wine, ciders, and hard, hard alcohol as well. They have a really diverse Chinese menu, and I haven't actually been able to go in there, but I viewed like some drawings and stuff that they sent, and everything looks like it's pretty much the same.
It is.
Perfect. Thank you for the experience.
It was their Sunday.
Yeah.
So they're actually going to be open Mondays, so Wednesday through Monday, which will close on Tuesday. So it's good to have some of these open and close on different days. So, 11:00 A.M. to 9:30 P.M. I think all the days that they're open. The owner of the corporation, I think it's you or something similar to that. I can't pronounce their name very well, and I tried a couple of times, and they corrected me every time I tried it two different ways. I did background checks on the applicant, as well as what was listed as her spouse or domestic partner. I didn't find any issues related to their backgrounds or any financial operation. They did previously own a restaurant in the Nida Organe. Based on everything that I saw in all their health ratings and reviews on the Yelp, they have pretty good business in there. So, I have no concerns about that, and I believe that they're, all their fees are paid at this point as well.
Questions? Anyone from the public, anything you say?
Pot stickers, not as good as Happy Dragons, but.
That is good, that is very good information.
Good, they just weren't as good.
It is another action item, if someone would so.
I move to recommend approval of the above liquor license request upon payment of all fees.
Motion, second discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Okay, the final one.
7-Eleven.
Yes.
It's the last one I have.
Yes.
They purchased, so 7-Eleven Corporation purchased the corporately-owned Circle Pay locations. There are still going to be individually franchised Circle Pay locations, in my understanding, but all of the corporate ones are going to be converted at some point to 7-Eleven's. 7-Eleven is a ginormous corporation, and they have a lot of stuff in place. All of their, all of their stuff is really, is really pretty high-end and developed. I haven't found anything that I was concerned about related to that business at all. They have applied for a off-premise sales license with the old CC, which allows them to sell wine, malt beverages, and ciders for consumption of off-premises. So no changes in, in really operations, they are accepting some new and new make, and now we can get service.
Questions for the presenter?
I love that comment here, reported. A little famous.
I totally believe in that.
There you go. All right. Any public comment related to this? Okay, this is an action item. Who hasn't made a motion today?
I move to recommend the above liquor license request upon payment of all fees.
Second. Motion, second discussion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Much carries? Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. City Manager, I think you have the next item, please.
Yes, I do. So I think this is a pretty straightforward piece of legislation, and it's really just essentially adjusting the budget calendar by two weeks. The reason for doing this is Gloria's, the finance director's been out, her father has been very ill and passed away last Tuesday, so she hasn't been able to give the budget documents as much attention as would be good for us to present. I have myself gotten to know the budget document much, much better than I had anticipated, which is a good thing. I have to say, it was very well put together from a technical standpoint. So I think we're really in good shape. We have had a chance to meet and kind of divide and conquer the tasks from here moving out, so I, I know we don't have no problem meeting the revised deadline. So essentially, we have moved the first budget meeting from May 1st to May 15th. We've got two weeks. The second meeting would be May 22nd, and the third one, if necessary, would be on May 29th. I should say the second one is necessary, but I'm assuming it will. The one thing I wanted to let you know is, we do have some notice after the budget committee approves the, the budget, and so we could make the June 11th council meeting if we do get it approved at the second meeting. If it goes to the third meeting, we'll have to either move all the way to the June 25th meeting or have a special meeting of council in order to get it, get it accomplished, just because of notice requirements. But we have, and Karen in particular, just looked through all the, all my particulars and calculated all the dates, and we feel very comfortable that this will be fairly easily accomplished. Running a little bit later than you know, but we should be, we should. But, so we're basically just asking because we, you guys, previously approved a budget calendar, just to adjust that calendar for that.
Is everybody okay?
I move to approve the adjusted budget calendar as presented in the panel.
I have a motion, second discussion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Much carries? Thank you very much. Appreciate that. And Gloria, really appreciated hearing from many of you, and thank you. It's, you know, the kinds of communications, the kinds of things we do when things are tough, really make a difference. It, you know, both for people involved and also to those that, that they touch. And the, the level of care and understanding that it's exhibited by this whole organization is really makes a difference, so I just wanted to comment on that. Council announcements.
Question for Karen. Do you have a time for the hotel tour on the 27th yet?
No, I haven't heard back from him. Thank you. We'll have that.
Okay.
It's not, it just may be a long tour, right? Just a...
No, and I did let him know that preference was either early in the morning or later in the afternoon, either one. I don't know how early he can make it out here, but.
Doesn't have to be really, really early.
All right.
It is a Saturday. I am leaving.
What about coffee time?
I was thinking nine-ish.
There you go.
Perfect.
We'll see. If not, people would like to go to dinner, somebody could send us there.
Move to adjourn?
All in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? Thank you very much, I'm glad to meet you.